I hereby call the meeting of the full city council for May eleventh, twenty twenty seven P M to order. Please join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
Republic should stand.
One nation, under God.
Rob.
Level.
And justice.
Justice.
Thank you, council. Uh, before we begin, I would like to read the um governor's order regarding open meeting law. Out of respect for public health and in response to the governor's declared state of emergency, this meeting will be close to the public and interested parties can instead access the deliberations via live stream on youtube dot com. You slash user slash the Brockton channel slash live. This meeting is being held in accordance with the governor with Governor Charlie Baker signed open meeting law order dated March twelfth, twenty twenty, which relieves a public body from the requirement of section twenty of chapter thirty eight that it conduct its meetings in a public place that is open and physically accessible to the public, provided that the public body makes provision to ensure public access to the deliberations of the public body for interested members of the public through adequate alternative means. We're going to do um roll call attendance. Asak?
Present.
Cardozo?
Present.
Ian Airy?
Present.
Farwell?
Present.
Lally?
Present.
Mendez?
Present.
Monahan?
Present.
Nacastro?
Present.
Rodriguez?
Present.
Thompson?
Present.
I believe you forgot me. I'm here too.
Cruz.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. Please let the record show that all eleven councillors are present. Um, to- tonight councillor's attorney Re- Resnick will be doing the roll call uh vote, just so um so you know when she calls your names. Before we begin with our agenda this evening, um I'm sad to say that our city suffered more losses this past week. Uh mayor Carl, past mayor Carl Pitaro, who served as mayor of the city of Brockton from nineteen eighty-five to nineteen ninety-one and was known as a true gentleman, passed away. As well as Robert Brady, who served as an A V O S selectman for the past ten years and was the beloved uh older brother of our Senator Mike Brady. And we also um, there was a loss of um Casey Cambridge, a lifelong resident of Brockton and our esteemed clerk, Tony Ziole's sister. Um all losses their lives due to complications with uh COVID nineteen. So I would like to take a moment of silence for them. We can take a moment of li- silence, councillors. May they rest in peace. Um, I would like on behalf.
President.
Madam President. Full city council, I'd like to extend our deepest and sear- sear's condolences to their families. Um, and just let them know that our thoughts and prayers are with them. Yes, councillor Ian Airy?
Uh, I'd also like to make mention of Mr. John Jerome, um who worked for the Brockton Public Schools for a good, good many years, was a true educator, um loved the school system, uh and ma- matter of fact even served as income superintendent of schools for a short span before Mrs. Smith was uh um placed in that position and he passed away last week as well from um, I know he was ill there for a little bit, but uh um John was a great trooper for the Brockton Public Schools and for this city, so I'd like to take a moment of silence with him.
Yes, I missed that one. Our thoughts and prayers are with his family and um we send our condolences from the city council. Thank you councillor.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh madam clerk, agenda item, um well, actually I'm the clerk, sorry, I apologize. Acceptance of the minutes of April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, city council meeting, accepted and placed on file. Number two of the finance committee for its meeting of May fourth, twenty twenty, accepted and placed on file. Under unfinished business, we have ordinance, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-three, division two, rates, charges, schedule B of the revised ordinances of the city of Brockton be ordained by the city council of the city of Brockton as follows. That schedule be so-called sewer charges and fees of article three sewer and sewage disposal, chapter twenty-three, division two, rates and charges of the revised ordinances of the city of Brockton be amended. In city council, January thirteenth, twenty twenty, read and referred to standing committee on ordinance, that a report was favorable as amended. In city council, April fifteenth, twenty twenty, passed with third reading is amended. The question is on ord- on ordination is amended by a roll call vote. Madam clerk.
Madam, madam president?
Yes, councillor Cruz.
Before we get to that, I know this has been something we've talked about and it's a very difficult decision to have to raise rates on anybody. And in the spirit of trying to raise the money that we need, but also try to alleviate some of the issues, I'd like to offer an amendment. Uh, following paragraph one, rate effective on all bills mailed on or after July first, twenty twenty. I would like to slash July first and enter November first. And further in section two, uh following all bills mailed o- on or after July first, twenty twenty, I'd like to slash July first and enter November first.
Second.
Okay, that's on the amendment, any uh, so we're voting on the amendment. To accept the amendment, that was your motion councillor Cruz?
Yes.
Okay, and that was properly seconded. Madam clerk, please uh read the roll. Um Asak?
Yes.
Cardozo?
No.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
No.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
I, yes.
I think, did you? Castro, you missed. Castro, sorry, I keep forgetting. Castro?
That's okay. I won't take it personally. That's a no.
That's an eight in the affirmative, so the motion um to amend carries. Okay. Uh councillor Farwell?
Madam President, first, if if I could through you to to our legislative council, I know we read this and it mentions sewer. But in fact, it encompasses, if I'm correct, both water and sewer rates. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
It it does, yeah. Um, I can pull it up if someone wants me to.
I I just wanted to make sure what I had in front of me. Counselor, I'm briefly going to uh, because people watch different meetings, I'm briefly going to say what I said originally. Clearly, these rates need to be adjusted. They have not been adjusted in years. However, six months from now, uh and I appreciate the amendment from the Ward One councillor, I have no idea what the economic outlook will be for people in the city. I don't know what it will be in this country or in the state. I think people are still going to be recovering financially from unfortunately, uh very difficult financial constraints they've been placed in, either through loss of their job or other factors that contribute to the pressures that families unfortunately are encountering. And I'd like to particularly focus on the sewer rates for a minute, just to make sure that all of the councillors who are going to vote for this understand what I think is going on. If I'm correct, what we are doing is we're coming up with one block rate system for both water and sewer, so that the charges for each block rate for water and sewer will be exactly the same as listed on the amendment offered at the March fifth ordinance committee meeting. And if I could go through the chair to our legislative council, is that correct?
You're asking what the 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 rate change is for?
Yeah, in other words, water and sewer rates, if this passes, will be murdered. They'll be the same. The block rate amounts will be exactly the same for both water and sewer.
I'm I'm pretty sure it's just a, the way that it's written is just a water um usage.
Correct.
Rate increase and then the addition of a user fee for water and sewer.
I know the title of this is misleading, but the only thing we're voting on tonight is increase in the block rates for water. Sewer remains as is. Am I correct?
Correct. And the way that it's written is because that's the way that it appears in our current statute.
Okay, well, I'm not going to vote for this, but I will point out, I'm I'm pleased block one was left alone. Block two for water is going to go up nineteen percent, block three, seven point six percent, block four, twelve percent, block five, five percent, block six, thirteen percent uh reduction, believe it or not. We're actually, for the higher usage, we're actually giving people a reduction in the rates. And uh, I don't think it's fair. I think the high-end users of the system should pay more than the lower-end users. I think this will reward people who have car washes and perhaps cultivate marijuana, which requires a lot of watering of the of the plant. Uh, and for all of the reasons that I've outlined, including the fact that there'll be still tremendous pressure on our residents in November and and actually into the year twenty twenty-one. Uh I am going to vote no, but I respect the work of the.
Okay councillor?
Thank you.
Councillor Lally?
Madam President, um I want to note that this was amended to, you know, not to happen now to happen later on to the future. And if things are as bad as they are now, we can always postpone it again. We can always move this, we can always move it again. Um, I'm going to vote for this. And it's not the easiest decision. I'm sure it's not the most popular decision. Um, you know, my ward is is all single-family homes, everyone, you know, everyone's working for a living. Uh, or if they're, you know, they're retired, they're, you know, they're living off of a very carefully balanced um, you know, arrangement financially. But this is something that, you know, w- we will have to adjust our roots at some point. This can't be just continuously postponed. This was, you know, last time the rates were adjusted, I was in the sixth grade. The water department is not where it should be financially and it prevents us from acting proactively. Uh, you know, the folks that I represent will tell you without hesitation, and I'm sure the folks that uh the councillor Thompson represents as well, really, really, any anyone in the city, we've got the worst roads. We, east side has the worst roads, wherever wherever you live has the worst roads, if you ask them. Um, but but my ward really does have, you know, some of the worst roads and some of the worst wa- water pressure in the city of Brockton. And, you know, when people ask me if I can pave their road, I can tell them, you know, if you want to promise, the best I can promise you is that I hope it's done before I die. Cause they, it's a little cynical, but really, the nothing more that that we can ensure. This, this will give us a chance to act proactively instead of reactively. This will give us a chance to fix a huge number of projects and with that pave the roads that are uh that are above them. Um, I mentioned when this first came up, you know, not when it first came up, but when when it was last discussed. I, I'll take, you know, I'll take my dog for walks and I'll go up and down some of these roads. And it's, it's embarrassing, you know, it it is, it is not a good feeling when people will call me up and say, my road is terrible, can you help me? And I know their road. I know it is terrible. Uh, and and there's, there's nothing that I can immediately do. You know, and and I think that at the very least, all the ward councillors can know and understand that. Uh, in this, I think this is essential, so I I will be voting for it. And I wanted to to make the the case in favor of them.
Thank you councillor, councillor Nacastro. And I, just councillors, we discussed this a few weeks back, so I don't want to repeat everything we went through a few weeks ago, so if you want to make a brief comment, I will allow that. Councillor Nacastro?
Thank you, madam president. Um, and I did speak a few weeks ago. The timing of this is wrong. Colleagues, I'd really like you to think hard about this. I'm getting calls from people who don't have food, who can't pay their rent or their mortgage payments. A- any little additional money you you add to their burden right now is tone deaf. Um, and I I agree with you that we need to work on our infrastructure, but timing is everything and people have to come first. And so I urge you to vote no with me. I'm willing to take this up at another time when times are better. Times are really bad now. Thank you, madam president.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Uh, thank you, madam president. Um, just to quickly echo uh Ward Six councillor Lally on um the the timing of this. Uh, Ward Five's roads, uh really, we've been waiting decades uh for our for our water infrastructure and for our roads to be repaired. Uh, there's never going to be a great time to uh increase water rates. Our enterprise fund is not functioning as it should and it's our responsibility to ensure that it is. Um, so I will also be voting for this. And just lastly, I wanted to address councillor-at-large uh Farwell's uh statement that uh block rate six is seeing a decrease. Um, councillor, it is not receiving a decrease. It it is actually being increased. So I I just want to clarify that for uh for the information of um the people and for the councillor. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Um councillor, I I did, yes councillor Rodriguez.
Uh, madam chair, uh at this time, I'd like to call for a vote.
Sure, I had a councillor that councillor Lally.
Once, once, once a councillor calls for a vote, it's a vote.
All right, that's, he had his hand up, sorry, before he did that, so.
Nope, no, I'd second that.
Okay. Uh, attorney Resnick, please read the roll. Asak?
Yes.
Cardozo?
No.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
No.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
No.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
That's eight in the affirmative, three in opposition. Okay, and the order passes, uh the ordinance passes as amended.
Madam President, move for reconsideration in the hopes it does not prevail.
Second.
A motion's been made for reconsideration. All those in favor of reconsideration? Can I take a, um? A roll call? Go ahead. Um, Asak?
No.
Cardozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
No.
Ian Airy?
No.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
No.
Mendez?
No.
Monahan?
No.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
No.
Thompson?
No.
That's um eight in opposition of the reconsideration, so it fails. Reconsideration fails. Councillor Cruz, did you have a question or?
No, that's it. Sorry, now I take my hand out.
Okay.
Madam President?
Councillor Lally?
Um, thank you. I just wanted to to add uh to the folks at home. Um, there is a process, like an an abatement process, where if, where some there there's some kind of, some kind of process that 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 you can receive some kind of assistance with. Wanted to add that.
Thank you. Uh, number four, ordinance be ordained by the city council of the city of Brockton as follows, that section two dash one-two-seven of chapter two is hereby amended by adding the following, section two dash one-two two-seven dash pay plan relative to Assistant Director of Human Resources. In city council, February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, read and referred to standing committee on ordinance, that report was favorable. In city council, April fifteenth, twenty twenty, passed with third reading. The question is on ordination by a roll call vote. Madam clerk, please read the roll. Councillor Farwell, you have your hand up?
Yes, I I just wanted to indicate to my colleagues that I will be voting for this. This was part of the local settlement. We did hold a uh telephone conference Keston and the mayor recently and while this will be ordained and this position will be created along with the next one, we are only under a one-year obligation to fund this. And given that we may be looking at layoffs and furloughs in the future, the mayor will at least have the flexibility to decide whether he continues these positions after one year. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Resnick, which, can you read the roll, please? Asak?
Yes.
Cardozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell? Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
That's eleven in the affirmative. The ordinance is ordained. Number five, ordinance be ordained by the city council of the city of Brockton as follows. That section two dash one-two-seven of chapter two is hereby amended by adding the following. Section two dash one-two-seven pay plan relative to diversity inclusion manager. In city council, February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, read and referred to standing committee on ordinance, that report was favorable. In city council, April fifteenth, twenty twenty, passed with third reading. The question is on ordination by roll call vote. Madam clerk, please read the roll. Asak?
Yes.
Cardozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell? Lally?
Yes.
Mendez? Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative. The ordinance is ordained. Number six, ordered total transfer of fifty-five thousand two hundred thirty-five dollars and forty cents from D P W Highway Division Snow Removal to Finance Department Equipment Rent slash Lease. In city council, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, read and referred to standing committee on finance, that report was favorable. The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam clerk, please read the roll. Asak?
Yes.
Cardozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell? Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yeah.
Eleven in the affirmative. The order is adopted. Number seven, ordered acceptance of an anonymous donation to be used solely by the police department in its purchase of a K nine cruiser and related equipment in the amount of forty-six thousand dollars from anonymous donor to the Brockton Police Department. In city council, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, read and referred to standing committee on finance, that report was favorable. The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam clerk, please read the roll. Asak?
Yes.
Cardozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative. The order is adopted. Councillor Nacastro, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, madam president. I just wanted to say I contacted um Chief Gomes about that donation and because I've not seen one from an anonymous donor before, and so I just wanted to question it. Because there certainly are circumstances where we would not want to accept money from someone. In this case, though, he wrote back and said he did vet the donation and he verified that the person it's coming from is a genuine supporter of K nine programs and makes such donations in a regular basis. Um, and has donated to other departments in the past. And so, and she she specified that the money go directly to a K nine program and not the general fund. I think this is a great thing and so I wanted to pass that on to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Number eight, ordered transfer of six hundred dollars from finance purchase of services to finance in-state travel. In city council, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, read and referred to standing committee on finance. That report was favorable. The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam clerk, please read the roll. Asak?
Yes.
Cardozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell? Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative. The order is adopted. Number nine, order to approve the sale of twelve parcels as described in plot sixteen dash twenty-seven, Break Street, owned by the city of Brockton, for the development of a sports complex as proposed by the response to request for proposal of new heights builders. In city council, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, read and referred to standing committee on finance, that report was favorable. The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam clerk, please read the roll. Asak?
Yes.
Cardozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy? Uh Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative. The order is adopted. Councillor Nacastro, you had your hand up? Are you all set?
I am at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Number ten, resolve the mayor be invited to a meeting of the council to review the city's continuing response to the COVID nineteen disease. In city council, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, read and referred to standing committee on finance, that report was favorable. The question is on adoption by a roll call vote.
Madam. Madam President, Madam President, make a motion to vote on ten and eleven collectively.
Any objections? Seeing none, we're taking ten and eleven collectively. I will read number eleven. Resolve to provide an update and review of the city's ongoing efforts to protect the health, welfare and safety of our residents related to this COVID nineteen disease. In city council, April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, read and referred to standing committee on finance, that report was favorable. The question is on adoption by a roll call vote. Madam clerk, please read the roll. Asak?
Yes.
Cardozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Airy?
Yes.
Farwell? Lally?
Yes.
Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nacastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Eleven in the affirmative. Resolves are adopted. Orders. Number twelve, ordinance be ordained pursuant to section twenty-seven dash five of the city ordinances zoning map whereby references made to an incorporation of said boundaries of each of the zones established as shown on the map entitled the City of Brockton, Massachusetts zoning district map dated November tenth, nineteen sixty-seven and thereafter amended. That said map be intended to reflect zoning changes from C two R two current to C two relative to Quincy Street and Center Street. This will be referred to ordinance and planning. Number thirteen, councillor Thompson?
Yeah, uh, thank you, uh, madam president. Um, I make a motion uh to tie, take items thirteen and fourteen and proceed under suspended rules so that we may vote on. and proceed under suspended rules so that we may vote on those matters tonight.
So I'm going to read them first. So number thirteen, ordered that the City Council void the order relative to an easement granted to Twenty-Eight Petronelli LLC over city-owned land identified as map one oh nine, Route zero five four, Plot Three, Zero Ward Street. Said order in City Council on April fifteenth, twenty twenty, being adopted favorably by the City Council and approved by the Mayor of Brockton on April twenty first, twenty twenty. The purpose of voiding the order is to resubmit the order for approval containing revised language from the City of Brockton Law Department to the easement agreement to be recorded with the Plymouth County Registry Registry of Deeds. And number fourteen, ordered the City of Brockton grants to Twenty-Eight Petronelli LLC an easement over city-owned land identified as map one oh nine, Route zero five four, Plot Three, Zero Ward Street for purposes of pedestrian and vehicle ingress, aggress, and access to its parking and dumpster storage to facilitate the redevelopment of both parcels. And further that the City Council authorized the mayor to execute the attached grant of easement and agreement revised and to take other actions necessary to carry out the terms, purposes, and conditions of the same. A motion's been made to to take them collectively and act on them this evening.
The motion?
Seconded, Counsel Nikastro.
Thank you. Um, can you tell us what's, can someone give us a narrative and tell us what's going on here?
Yes, Madam President, if I may?
Yes, Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. So counselors, this matter was previously before the Real Estate Committee. It's regarding an easement that we granted to Twenty-Eight Petronelli LLC. At that time, it was debated and discussed and then approved favorably to the full City Council. The recently, the Law Department reached out to me to inform me that an early version of the easement agreement was attached to the order sent to the clerk following the City Council's approval of the easement. So it was explained to me that this is basically an administrative error where the agreement, and and if my memory serves, during the Real Estate Committee discussions, it was brought up that a new version of the easement agreement was submitted to include language that the Law Department requested that the petitioner include in the easement to address some of the issues that the Law Department wanted addressed. So it was our purpose to include that newer updated version with the order. But what happened is it looks like for some reason, an earlier draft of the agreement was detached to the order. So for all purposes, this is a basically an administrative error where the wrong agreement was attached to the order in which the Law Department was seeking to file or register with the Registry of Deeds. So this is just to correct that administrative error. Nothing substantively has changed on this matter, and Mr. Carmen is is headed to the zoning board to seek a variance for this property. And this easement agreement is necessary for his petition. So therefore, I'm asking that we act on it tonight so that he can be have this when he does appear before the zoning board. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Lally?
I wasn't finished yet.
Oh, well.
Forgive me, my hand is still up. May I proceed, Madam President?
Counselor Castro, go ahead.
Thank you. Can you tell us what the changes are?
Um, I can, if you want. Yeah, Karen Fisher reached out. It's language relating to the indemnity language for the city. So it just added some tighter protections to the city in the grant of the easement.
Are you all set, Counsel Nikastro?
Yeah, I just want to point out that the on the line where it's being signed on the signature page, the name of the person who's signing is not Edward Condon, it's Theodore Condon. Either that or the name of the person signing is Edward Carmen, but the notary is incorrect because it lists Theodore Carmen. You've got two different names for Mr. Carmen listed on this document.
Counsel Resnick, do you, I mean?
Um, it was drafted by the Law Department, so I don't, I I'm I'm not entirely sure what what the notary signature would be with it with respect to this easement.
All set, Counsel, or did you have another?
Thank you, that's it.
Okay. Counsel Lally, do you still have a question?
I I just wanted to to add to what Counselor Thompson said. I'd spoken with him earlier. Both of these items were discussed and voted on favorably. This is only, you know, a change in the paperwork. The the spirit of what we're of what we recommended favorably is still still here.
Okay. Counsel Farwell, you had your hand up at one point. Did you have a question?
No, I was just going to say to you, Madam Chair, that the these questions that come up, if if the Law Department had drafted just a simple summary of we're changing this because of this and we're doing this because of that, I think it would have saved a lot of time tonight. I mean, I I certainly think it's appropriate to talk to the ward counselor. But if you're going to have everyone vote on it, why not at least give us a summary of what we're supposed to be doing and why? And I think that will streamline the whole process in the future. So that's that's more directed to you when you have a conversation with them and we can improve lines of communication. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Madam, what are we voting on? We still aren't taking these.
Okay, uh, to
To take them collectively.
We're taking them collectively. Counselor Thompson made a motion to act on them tonight.
Correct. We haven't voted on that yet.
That's what we're voting on right now.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
ASAC?
Yes.
Codozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Arie?
Yes.
Farwell? Lally?
Yes.
Mendez? Monahan?
Yes.
Nikastro?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
So that motion carries unanimously.
Okay, do you want to pass this?
Get, yes. That was on the motion to take it collectively tonight. So now we'll do separately to pass the order favorably.
Please read the roll.
Or as as the council votes.
Yes.
Uh, ASAC?
Yes.
Codozo?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Ian Arie?
Yes.
Farwell?
Yes.
Lally? Mendez?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yes.
Nikastro? Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
That's eleven in the affirmative.
The order pass is ordained. Counselor Cadozo, that that concludes our agenda. Counsel Cadozo?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the late file.
Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded to accept a late file. Now, go ahead. All those in favor of accepting the late file, raise your hands. No objections, okay. The late file. Ordinance be ordained by the City of Brockton revise ordinance of the city, section fourteen, Article One, offenses miscellaneous in general be amended by inserting the following section, section fourteen dash eighteen face covering mandate. The governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has declared a state of emergency on March tenth, twenty twenty resulting from the spread of COVID-nineteen. The Brockton City Council has determined that the threat of COVID-nineteen presents a real and imminent danger to public health, safety, and general welfare of the residents of Brockton in accordance with the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, and COVID-nineteen Order Number Thirty-One by the Governor of Commonwealth dated May first, twenty twenty, the City of Brockton will adopt as follows. The this will be referred to ordinance. Counsel Cadozo, do you have your hand up?
Hi, Madam President, thank you. I just wanted to express to folks at home the importance of following guidelines and the importance of this order and wearing your masks when you're out in public. Um, studies are proving over and over again that this helps to mitigate the spread of COVID-nineteen. So I just want folks to know how important it is when you go to the supermarkets. I I'm still seeing folks without face masks even after the governor passed his order. And so I'm hoping that people will adhere to this very, very important. If nothing else, please wear your face mask when you're out in public because it it really proves that, and if studies are showing that it helps to decrease the spread of COVID-nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And in relation to this ordinance, I would like to congratulate Ms. Linda Cahill, who was voted in by the Board of Health as the interim health officer for the Board of Health after John McGary resigned as of last Friday. Um, I'd also like to thank our Board of Health inspectors who have been working hard and have been in the trenches. They're dealing, you know, they're still continuing with their inspections. And they actually have been doing the contact tracing, working with the nurses with contact tracing and delivering PP to residents who have had the virus. So thank you for all they do in in our health department and hopefully, um, you know, this this will be behind us soon. Uh, councils, I see some hands are up. Counsel Farwell?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I I wanted to apologize to Counselor Thompson and the Ordinance Committee and to all of you. I was looking at my notes here, and the counselor is quite right. The block rate for water, block rate six is going up from eight thirty-three to nine dollars, and I I regret watching my notes a little more carefully and presenting misinformation. So again, my apologies, and I appreciate Counselor Thompson pointing that out. Thank you.
Counsel, Counsel Nikastro?
Thank you, Madam President. Last Friday, I attended a joint meeting of the Mass Select Association and the Municipal Municipal Counselors Association talking about what's going on at the State House and especially talking about funding. This Wednesday, I'm going to attend another Mass Municipal Association Counselors Committee meeting on budgeting. There are so many financial unknowns at this time. And there are so many quality of life improvements that the City of Brockton hopes to make that are all dependent upon funding from the state. We're trying hard to leave no financial stones unturned. And for that reason, I want to implore my Ward Four residents and really all Brockton residents to fill out their census forms. As of April twenty ninth, more than half of all American households have responded. Brockton is behind in their responses. Last month, the federal government sent paper censuses to sixty-four million households. A high percentage of residents of Brockton participating in the census will mean more accurate counts, and that will increase the amount of dollars we get from the federal government. And so I want to implore Brockton residents to please fill out your census forms on paper or online. Please participate in the census. Brockton is going to need every dollar to keep giving you services that we also very much deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Cadozo?
I'm sorry, Madam President, that I was all set. Thank you.
Okay. Councilors, any, is everybody all set? Any other questions or comments? With no further business, this meeting is adjourned.